Good to go?
Just almost.
Okay.
Just almost.
Just a little bit. Excellent.
Okay, we are good to go.
Okay, well, thank you all for joining us for the July 10th City Council meeting. I hope you all had a great Independence Day. I know that I really enjoyed the fala, the rodeo, the parade, concerts, and yeah, just had a really good time. Saw many of you there, and yeah, it was a really great weekend. First, we'll get started with a roll call.
President.
Here.
Diane Crocker.
Here.
Matt Lehman.
Present.
Christopher McMoran.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Justin.
And I'm here. So first, we have public comment, and there's no way we have anybody in the audience, but do we have anybody signed up?
No, we do not.
Okay. So moving on, we have our consent agenda. Would welcome motion to approve consent agenda. Thank you. Motion made by Counselor Kazi. Seconded by Counselor Crocker. Any further discussion? All in favor, please go ahead.
I need to make a note of this governor's correction that I sent to this kidding.
Okay, so all in favor of passing the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our unfinished business discussing the use of the ARPA funds, and we had just had a work session on that. We're not taking any further action on that tonight. Ask the manager to bring back additional information at a future meeting. So we'll go ahead and table that conversation until a future meeting for now. Next, we have the collective bargaining agreement. And Chris, do you want to talk about that?
Chelsea is here to talk about that tonight.
I don't have much of a staff report. We've talked about this process a little bit before, but we have hopefully settled with the absentee public works directors and employees. It did take a little bit long to process, most of that was due to scheduling, and we had very amicable negotiations, so that was nice. And I'll just go over a few of the things. If you all have time to look through it, I know you don't have the fully changed version. A lot of things are not changing, we did update some legal language, those similar to the police contract, the contract just had some outdated language, gender code language, some case laws that have come forward that were trying to restructure. And then we also, as part of this process, introduced new job descriptions for the positions, which now includes certification requirements for the positions, which is industry standard. You'll find that almost in any city that you go to, if public works has some sort of certification requirements, and that is both for knowledge of employees so that they are educated in their field and knowledgeable and succession planning, so it helps us if someone leaves that we have certification coverage and further requirements for the various water and wastewater uses. We also restructured the incentive pay program, which we've heard from you before, we talked about that with the employee handbook, and then not so much with the police special assignment pay, there's has already been fairly updated over the years, but we removed some of the trainings and certifications that we felt needed to be included in job descriptions. So first aid, competent person, just things again that you would find if you went somewhere else and looked at job descriptions, like you want the people around you to have that first aid training, it shouldn't necessarily be an incentive pay, it should just be part of their job. So in removing those pays, we did negotiate a 2% salary schedule increase, and that was to some of the employees came out a little bit under, some of the employees came out a little bit above, it's kind of those things where you can't get everyone apples for apples, similarly to what we did when we restructured the police salary schedule. So in this case, they kept the same salary schedule, but we did apply a 2% increase in lieu of a number of incentives pays, which you can see what we sunsetted if you look in on page 13 of the document, so. I think there were about five or six of them that we removed. And also another one that we removed was a kind of a separate incentive pay for one specific certification that only one employee was eligible for here, and had beginning that as a percentage-based pay, which none of the other pays were percentage-based, it was just written into the contract some years ago, probably because we didn't have anyone else with that certification, we just wanted to encourage someone to get it as backup, because I think it is for water treatment, so you don't want to leave your water treatment facility uncertified. So we, that was part of that negotiation too, was to remove that so that we could restructure how we can incentivize getting certifications that are at or above our requirements. And we then applied the 4% COLA that the rest of the staff got. Public Works averaged about a 4.5% increase if you take everyone and average what their actual increase was after removing the incentive pay and applying those two to their salaries. And we also added longevity pay with the same as the other employees, the management employees, nonrepresented employees, so everyone now has the same longevity pay program, which you've also seen before. We increased our on-call compensation by two hours per week, so that was kind of a negotiation for us. That area is all across the board, when you look at other cities' contracts, some of them have really high either dollar amounts or hourly comp time, some of them are very low, so we just, we went up two hours, which we felt was fair, that has not gone up for a number of years, so. Let's see, we also, similar to police, added an additional annual cash out fee for comp time, so if they do have comp time and it's maxed out and they're not using it for vacation, they can cash that out, which reduces liability to the city, so we kind of want to encourage you to not just bank a bunch of time that you're not using. Most public works employees, they are good about using their comp time, and they're not accruing it like at the same rate as police accrue it more because of their schedules, and if they have additional hours, that can add up, so. Let's see, also, we also worked on, I don't think I mentioned this with police, but we've done this for all employees, which the new Oregon paid leave and workers' comp were allowing for topping off, so that allows you essentially, if you get a worker's comp payment, your weekly wage is $500, but you only get $400 for your worker's comp claim, they can use their leave to bring themselves up to full, so $500. So with Oregon paid leave, we needed to make a policy that said that we do that if we want to choose to do that, which we felt that allowing employees to be whole, while they're obviously going through something, is something that we wanted to do, we didn't want people to not be able to make themselves whole. They cannot make more than they make working here, so that's their rules with workers' comp and Oregon paid leave, which is about that. And we also added the June date as a holiday in their contract, but you've also seen that in the playbook in police. And so anyone has a question or wants clarification or information about that?
I have one question. On 14-12 training, the second sentence talks about training may be authorized but on duty time or is overtime. Is training tip, is that a typical thing, that training, that the overtime piece of the training is done as overtime?
It can be if they have, say, a weekend training. We did have one of our new employees, there was, part of his CDL training was on a Saturday, so in that case, you can either agree to flex that time, so they can work, you know, it doesn't come up very often, but I think they like to have it in there just to, if it did come up and they weren't agreeing to it, it's in there. But it doesn't come up very often. Most trainings are similar to most of us, and especially for public works, they're designed to be during the work day.
All right, thank you.
And so the overall budget impact, it sounds like it's about 4.5% over budget from last year?
It varies, so.
Like total?
Some of the employees, yeah, and that's just for the incentive pay shift, the COLA shift, there is longevity pays on top of that, so that is there, that is just that incentive pay adjustment with the COLA. The budget amount accounted for all of these changes, so we don't foresee anything additional for that.
Some of the employers are also, most of the employers are eligible for step increases, so that would be in addition to the cost of living adjustments as well.
Sure.
So that all gets counted for the budget?
Yeah.
Just want to note, Counselor Kazi.
Yeah, Counselor Kazi.
Yes. In section 14.7, which addresses on-call personnel, in the fifth line of the first paragraph, it refers to 14.5 callback, but section 14.5, it's actually on overtime, so I think either it should refer to overtime or it should refer to 14.8, which is callback.
Should be 14.8.
It's 14.8, yeah. I think the attorneys swapped those sections around, so we will note that. Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
I have about four or five other script notes errors, may I email those to you, Chelsea?
Yes, you can send them to me. I'm making note of them currently, unless we have a major overhaul, this is the legislative draft, so we've been advised to print a copy and track any changes that we perceive, and then when we have to touch it again, we'll make those changes. So yes, please, email it.
Thank you, thank you, Ruth. I saw Counselor McMoran, would you give me a hand?
Yeah, I just had sort of a technical question on 5.5. It talks about every employee who's required to use a private automobile will be compensated at the current IRS rate, and then it says if the employee uses their private vehicle for an out-of-town trip, they can come to independent terms for mileage reimbursement? I was just curious sort of what, like why we would reimburse someone anything other than the IRS rate?
We probably would not, this, some of these sections, we were not going to get, we would still be bargaining. So there were a number of sections that did have very outdated language that they were not wanting to touch this time, so we just made note again of some of these sections that we weren't able to get changed and updated. We do have a city policy as well on this, and we're not doing that sort of reimbursement. I think that's probably really old language that's just managed to stay in there, yeah. It still is up for our approval, so we, we're not going to probably record that, so.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a recipient of motion there. Counselor Nardi?
I move to approve resolution 23.17, ratifying the absentee collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion made by Counselor Andrade and seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Excellent. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Next, we have the management report.
Yeah, I'll touch on this briefly. First, I got a doubt on my assistant city manager a little bit, did a phenomenal job this year, being new to the city and taking on these contracts, really took the lead on working with our attorney and the union attorney or the union rep, and just want to commend her publicly for her effort in getting police contract and absentee contract done. It was very amicable, doesn't mean it wasn't stressful, and there was just a lot of work that happened there, so thank you, Chelsea, for stepping in and taking that on this year.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Management report, which Chelsea also stepped in and took careful, I was out of town. There's quite a bit in here, I have to answer any questions. I will preface it with, I do have a fairly substantial report to give, and I'll have, I'll partner with Jim on an update on the water reservoir, that will include, it's not here, but maybe I could address anything that's in here first, I'm just know I've got probably a five, 10-minute discussion to have with you about the reservoir after that.
Sounds good.
I don't have questions for things in here, but I have other questions of things that were not in here.
Fair enough, let's take those.
Okay, cool. Um, I was hoping to get an update on the DEI training that we had discussed before. Should I list them off or just have you like go back and forth?
Do you want to?
Yeah, DEI training, I've reached out to look for specific dates and times that would be available. I think I need to follow up, it's probably waiting for me to send an email off. I talked to a few of you individually about dates and times that wouldn't work for vacations and things, I think it's going to be late enough, like September, October timeframe, that I don't think I'm going to be as worried about vacations as what I was thinking I would be, so I just need to follow up with them to give them some dates that would work for us.
Okay, thank you. And then farmer market schedule for boots?
Yeah, sorry, email today, thank you for the reminder, I'll just get that out, I just haven't got the spreadsheet out yet.
Sounds good. Updates for video and audio?
Reached out to Josh Tua, who's got the part on order, on hold. Swiped him last week, and he was going to check in with the manufacturer and try to make a decision whether we need to pick something different, or if he was going to hear we had a date certain when that was going to be here, so follow up with him this week, see where is that?
And it was just backordered, kind of?
It has been back, well, on order, I don't know, they ever said backorder, but it was on order and just delayed for months now. So my conversation I had with him is if we need to do a different product, does the same thing, let's do that, he said, yeah, let me check the manufacturer, I'll get back to you. That was just last week.
Cool, thanks. And then final Mill Pond updates, because I just saw recently that the work order was lifted.
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, I'm sorry that didn't get in here, if I'd have been in town, I'd have pulled more of that in there, but on Mill Pond Crossing, the stop work order's been lifted, he's, we've got agreement with the developer on the appropriate elevations, he's agreed to go with what the city had set as minimum elevations there. All of the property pins have been installed and have got elevation set on them, so he knows exactly where he needs to be at each of those. His engineer is working on a revised grading plan, because the minimum elevations are slightly lower than what the currently approved elevations are. Wouldn't a lot detail on the numbers, but essentially what was originally approved was, say, this high, the minimum, in order to stay above the floodplain is like this high, so he's looking to make that revision, save some money on fill that needs to be brought to the site. So that revised grading plan, we're waiting for you to submit it, in the meantime, we are looking at issuing building permits, pending an individual elevation certificate for each of the individual lots, prioritization of building permit. We're also looking for some final engineering on raising the elevations up. If you drive by, you see he's got some forms put directly on top of the existing concrete, there's some engineering that needs to be submitted in order to assure that that will function the way that it's intended to function, so we're on some engineering before we issued a building permit. So we issued this, we lifted the stop work order in order for him to be able to get his financing laid out and approved with his bank. We have not reissued any of the actual building permits for the individual lot yet, he's still working on those applications. He has made progress in the detention pond between 15th and 16th Street, they actually came across a very, very wet spot, so they think that somebody on 15th Street may have a leak or something that's causing it to be very wet there, so they can't pour concrete, they're trying to get that resolved. He asked the city to look at that just this morning, so we'll try to find whose neighbors got a broken irrigation pipe or something going on that's making it so wet back there, so they can proceed with the detention pond and pouring the concrete floor that goes on that detention pond. He's done some initial outreach to KNE Excavating about helping with some of the storm pipe that needs to be installed along Chapel Drive and fixed, and is in discussions with them. Their, KNE's currently doing the county project on Chapel Drive east of his projects, we're still going to collaborate with them while they're on site to do some of his work as well for him. He sent another email out, I want to say last week, it might have been the week before, to homeowners on the lot line adjustments, and requested that they reach back to Mill Pond Crossing with their status of reviewing the updated legal descriptions and deeds for, that were sent to them, it's been a couple months ago now that they were given those. I've talked to some property owners there that have taken steps to contact their mortgage holder and start the process of that review, and from the three I've talked to, it's all a little bit different process for each of them, and so understandably, it's going to take a little bit of time for those approvals to come, but the encouragement is for them to reach back out to Mill Pond Crossing once they, they're ready to proceed, because all those have to be recorded at the same time, so there's a little bit of a lag there in just getting those reviewed by the mortgage companies. There are, with the elevation change, part of that is going to mean moving the storm collection, instead of having those storm drain out to the street, it's going to draw them, strain to the back of the properties, which is allowed, but he's got to put a new storm pipe in there, and that storm pipe is then going to connect into the storm manhole that's in the street on 16th Street. So once all that gets approved, and he makes his final cut to 16th Street, his plan is to come back in and patch the open trenches that time, and then once the homes are done completion, he'll do his final overlay on 16th Street, so we have a full continuous layer over 16th Street. So there'll be some temporary patching, once that cuts, final cuts made, and then that temporary patch will just be in place until all the homes are done or close to being done, and then we'll get a full repaint over the entire street. I think that's what I know so far.
Will the occupancy be before that overlay is done, or will it, how would that work as far as occupancy of those new homes?
In talking to him today, his schedule is to have the paving, oh, it's very aggressive, he'd like to have the paving done this year while the weather's still good, which would mean prior to any of the homes being completed, that's his intent, there's a lot of kind of work to do between now and then, so his intention is to have it done prior to homes being finished. But again, there's several balls in the air still. Any other questions on Mill Pond? Okay. Any other questions on the admin side of things or public works, what they're working on?
I just have like a question on the curb painting of public works. Where we're doing that, because I have actually gotten a few comments about like folks parking in like a bike lane or a no parking area where we have like a no parking sign on either end of the block, but I can see how it here in the middle of the block, you don't know that, just are we painting those kind of curbs? And one of the things, people parking in sort of bus stops where the yellow or red is eroded to a point that I honestly can't be mad at them, because I probably wouldn't realize that was a bus stop either if I didn't see the sign.
Yeah, if you've got specific locations, just email me, I can follow up with Kevin, see where they're doing, I don't know the specific locations, but we do take note of requests that we get throughout the year, and then when we're curb painting, we go and do the ones that are bad, and then other ones that are requested, if they're bad, we stray a little bit from doing a bunch of new curb painting, but where it's necessary, we'll go out and paint them, yeah, just let me know.
What about painting in front of a mailbox to keep people from parking in front of it?
We generally don't, because you're not supposed to park there, regardless of what color the curb is.
We used to have yellow on ours, but we don't anymore, and it's been a problem.
Send me the address, and we'll take a look at it and see, I'm not guaranteeing anything, though, you know, the law is you're not supposed to block them regardless of what color the curb is, really try to paint the curbs where it's not obvious, and so they might need some additional guidance that, you know, there's not a bus here now, but there will be a bus here at some point, so you can't park here, or this is too close to the corner for you to park, you really should be back. Mailboxes are pretty obvious, so again, we've kind of gotten away from parking under the mailboxes just because there's a mailbox there, but if it's a problem area, we can note it, then I won't say we won't do it, but.
We have in our little neighborhood, I think, three businesses that park their trucks and stuff, or their workers come in and park in front of my house, and then they're done all day long, and if they're in front of the mailbox, there's nothing I can do, but.
Call the police, I'm towed. Call the police.
The tow-in force.
Yeah, let's talk about, we're going to look at it, yeah.
One thing, before we go into your longer report, it's funny to mention that in August, the first meeting in August, I think we're planning to postpone that and just do our second meeting in August instead, to do conflict, our scheduling conflicts.
So skipping.
We don't have any like legal reason that we need to have an August, like we don't have a 30-day deadline.
Once a month.
You just have a legal reason that you have to have one during the month.
So it'd be August 28th is the fourth Monday in August?
Yeah.
That would be the meeting in place of the other.
That's right.
And can I just mention one other thing, my neighbors have been telling me repeatedly over the past week and a half, is an intersection on Main and 7th Street, they think that turn, if you're going westbound on Main and you turn right onto 7th, where that new construction is, that it's made it narrow for larger trucks to make that turn and have two vehicles in that intersection.
Yeah. Yeah, we filled in several calls here at City Hall as well, there's a pretty good Facebook deal going on about it as well. And I don't want to minimize it, the design has been reviewed by, what was Murray Smith at the time, Carson now, they've done the modeling to show that those turns can be made. To be fair to the city and the contractor, they're still not done with all the concrete that goes back in there, there's still cones there, there's heavy equipment around, it's, it's, you know, you do have to slow down pretty dramatically to make the corner, and it's not even fully constructed yet, where you have the full width that you will have, so a full width, the completion will be 20 feet wide. Our engineering team looked at it again and said the numbers work. We did get an email this morning from the fire department to the city engineer just to review, and they gave the specs of the turning radius of the fire trucks, just to double-check that that was accounted for as well, and I haven't seen the report back from Carson yet on that, but I'll be looking into it. I will say it's the same width that 10th Street's going to be when 10th is done, it's similar to, I think, 11th Street, I'll have to take a look, but it's not the only street that's been narrowed down to that 20-foot margin for a local street coming off of the highway, and that's what some of those are going to be. We did, in response, also put together some information about bull bouts and the important role that bull bouts play, and giving better visual to pedestrians that are waiting to cross the street, pinching the corners and having traffic in the passing, the traffic lanes slow down, there's a lot of benefits to those, and one of those is you have to slow down substantially more before you make your turn, that's different than, we can't make the turn because we can't fit, right? And so that's the balance, is we do want it to slow traffic, we don't want it to stop traffic, and so there's been some initial work done, there was some more work done, we've had conversations with ODOT, the fire truck one was kind of a new one that came up this morning that we'll look at, but so far, all the advice that we've gotten from our engineer and ODOT is to maintain the course and that those are going to be what they're going to be. If you've got a full-size pickup truck and a, you know, a trailer full of horses behind you, you might consider taking a ride on 9th Street instead of 8th Street, right? So you may have to adjust your route based on what that new norm is going to be for those streets, depending on what you're driving, but again, that doesn't make me want to stop traffic, right? So there's a balance there that we're still looking at.
And could that be an article or something that we can put into the newsletter regarding those, because it's become a real conversation.
There is.
In the community.
Yeah, and I think we're waiting a little bit to make sure, I mean, obviously, the least expensive time to have caught that and done some of the difference was about a year and a half ago, right, before we went out to bid. Next lease expense time would have been sometime during our pre-construction meeting, that if anybody had a problem, the contractor center could have done it, that'd have been a good time. Now the concrete's in, I was like, the next least expensive time to do it before sidewalks and all the other infrastructure goes in. Um, but all that said, you know, if it needs to be re-engineered and changed, it can be. One of the biggest drivers there, I will tell you, and looking at that intersection specifically is the ADA ramps that are included in those bull bouts. You have to have so much space in order to get the right slopes. And if you shorten that space, you increase the slope. And so. ADA ramps are driving a lot of that because it takes so much space to meet the grades. And that's what those bull bouts are doing at this point is they are the location where those ADA ramps are being located. So. It's not as easy as just, well, just give me another five feet here. Well, now your ADA ramp's not compliant and that won't work. So. There's a little bit of movement there I think we could do, but it's not as easy as just moving all the curbs back and opening things up again. So.
But I think just giving that information out to the public and explanation and clarification can be really helpful because there's just so many questions and and.
We hear back from the fire department's concern. We'll post again and and we did put something on social media. After information put on the website, we did put a post on social media pointing people back to the website. To get the information on the importance of the bull bouts. I think when we hear back on the fire truck, that'd be an appropriate time to put some additional information out. At some of the newsletter. I I think that's a good, good suggestion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Talk about reservoir?
Yeah, talk about the reservoir real quick. I'm sure about my water. I always bring my water, except for this feed. That we're talking about water reservoir. The. The biggest portion of the, well, I don't know about that. The most recent um, development on the water reservoir was pouring. The base slab that everything else then gets built on top of. Um, it's an extremely large pour. Very thick and very big.
One, one pour, it's a mono.
Mono, something call it.
Monolithic pour as opposed to separate.
So the. I'm trying not to get too much in the weeds and then I can answer more questions in the weeds if I want to go there, but essentially. The city's contract is with HP Civil. They're our contractor for the project. They've contracted with a secondary party, Marion, that does concrete work. To do this pour. They've made arrangements, Marion and HP Civil made arrangements with. Riverbend, the concrete manufacturer, the plant. To provide them that concrete. And when they do that, they had a big pre-construction meeting, talked about this. One day full long pour about being able to provide concrete, you know, provide concrete in time intervals to where it wouldn't get. Delivered and then hardened before the next batch got there. Having enough trucks, enough personnel. So it's a big deal. And a lot of steps were taken to make sure that we would be able to do it without any problems. But there's a problem. Uh, Riverbend had some malfunctioning of their equipment at their Corvallis plant. About, well, we don't know when. We know at least early in the day and later in the day and then later in the day, at some point in the day. They stopped trying to get cement from their Corvallis plant, started bringing it from all from Eugene. And in all of that confusion throughout the day, there were several times. Throughout the day where they didn't meet their minimum time intervals for delivering the next truck. It's um, the contract that the city has. So again, if you've got these layers from the city's point of view, we contracted HP Civil to do a job for us. They subcontracted for their contractor, Marion, to do a job for them. Who contracted with other agency, Riverbend, to provide them a product. When there's a breakdown, then everybody points the finger back up the hill, right? And so we're. Somewhat insulated where we're at, better insulated than others. But at this point, what we're hearing from the city engineer, West Tech, who is at the city level. From West Tech engineers.
And who was on the site.
Was onsite, but. Their initial response to the problems and the contractor not being able to meet those timeframes. Is that the city shouldn't accept the slab as it's been poured. Because there's no way for them to ensure or guarantee or even. Say that the concrete isn't going to fail because it didn't meet the timeframes that were. Put in place in the contract and everybody agreed to.
It's expensive to remove uh, this large slab. It's what a hundred foot, a hundred ten foot. Thick, uh, at least 24 inches thick. It may be thicker than that. I don't remember. Uh, and a rebar. There's a lot of rebar. And replace it. Removal and replacement maybe would be. Yeah, three quarters to a million.
Three quarters to a million. Those are the numbers that West Tech put out there.
Uh, and as you can imagine, then. Uh, supplier. Uh, subcontractor who does concrete. Uh, and the general. Would like a different solution. Uh, the. Supplier uh, has provided information that G R, our mix of cement. Would last. Uh, it it would be fine for five hours. So this isn't really a problem. As long as other things also happened. Uh, which we don't know happened. That the. Concrete subcontractor has had a consultant from. Montana come and do non-invasive testing. Uh, ground penetrating radar kinds of thing. There, that report is, uh, they don't think that there was a cold joint. Uh, between the pores. What West Tech is telling us and what kind of intuitively makes sense to me is. Well, there's not necessarily voids. But you can't really tell at this point. If the strength of this slab is what you paid for or not. And. We gave them a very short. Time to come up with a plan to remove. And replace. I think that the general has done that, but they. Their supplier, the subcontractor would like to have a discussion with us. Uh, they would like not to leap to removal. There is a delay in building. Uh, if we, if we do this, but it also seems. Reasonable to me that we ought to get our own kind of independent consultant. Uh, and. We've got some thoughts on on who that person might be. To at least review the testing that was done uh, by the concrete supplier, the concrete. Manufacturer to see if it, if it means anything. It may be that there will need to be invasive testing of the slab. Which in my mind, uh, doesn't seem like. Seems like, okay, now now we're drilling holes in the slab and and pouring things. Uh, and how many of those do you need to have? I think the the big risk for the city and for ratepayers is probably not. Uh, an immediate failure. Uh, of, you know, you put a lot of weight on top of this and waters are pretty heavy. So what happens? But probably at this point, I would be as concerned with the duration. Uh, we're, we're paying for a large facility that you want to have last. For its expected lifespan, not some fraction less than that. And seems to me like our conversations with. Everybody involved. Probably is going to include. Well, how do we, who's going to pay for it if it breaks in five years or 10 years? Or 20 years?
And nobody wants to take that on and step up, but they're more than willing to give us experts and say it'll be just fine. We promise. How much for that? So we've asked West Tech for the name of some concrete specialists that can. Review this and as Jim said, at least review the work that's been done and the study, the testing that's taken place. And at least. Speak the language with the other concrete experts that are concrete contractors have put together. To just see if it makes sense, if they're omitting things, if they're overstating things. So. That's going to cost us some money to do. I think it's fairly inexpensive insurance for a risk of.
It's not going to be three quarters to a million, three quarters of a million, two million dollars to.
But it will be an expense. There's some contingency built into this project. So I. Until I know what that expense is, I don't really know what I'm asking for other than a blank check. To reach out to a consultant. Um, I think the one that we're looking at is out of Texas. And have them start reviewing, develop a scope of the work that they would do for us. Develop some costs and and how much we would budget for that. Um, but I am going to, there is a timeliness here. So I, when I say blank check, I do need some latitude, some. I need some ability to flex that a little bit on how much. It's worth and all, of course. Talk to the engineers, talk to public works director, talk to city council on what that would be. Um, or where this may end up is in a litigation situation. And if we feel after. Talking with our consultant. That's working for us on our behalf and reviewing everything. If we feel like that slab just can't be. In any way guaranteed to last the lifespan of that facility. Um, then, you know, we may end up in a litigation type situation with with um. Contractor. We hope we don't get that way. Ideally. And I have no problem saying this, but ideally the slab is fine. But we need some assurance that it's going to be fine and we may need some insurance that it's going to be fine. And so until we have some assurance and some insurance. We're not in a good place to really proceed with the reservoir. And so. What I'm asking for is just some consensus to move forward with getting consultant on board. That knows concrete, that can review what's been done so far. Recommend some additional testing. Potentially do some additional testing for us. And bring those results back on best ways to proceed. There's definitely a timeliness issue here. We don't want to be caught in a position where. The contractor had argued that we delayed things or didn't allow them to mitigate timely manner and those types of things. So. I'm looking for a little latitude to be able to proceed as best as possible in the city's interest. And it may be coming back and asking for permission. But if we're not meeting until the end of August, it'll probably be coming back and reporting. And here's what we took care of. And here's our current position. So.
Say uh, contractors were able to get their consultant out. With, well, less than a week.
And so do you realistically, does it seem like 10 to $30,000 range?
Yeah, I think if you did a cap of, you know, $30,000. I could stay under that and get a good start and come back if it ends up being more than that.
And my question is about the individual you're contacting. How do we know that the, you know, as far as the quality and the caliber of the work?
The recommendation from West Tech Engineering and and um. That's about as much as I know at this point.
What I would say is it would be somebody who is a professional engineer. Uh, they would need to be uh. Licensed in Oregon regardless of where they are. Their stamp would have to be a stamp that can work here. And it is likely also to be somebody with PhD in chemistry.
West Tech Engineering, our engineers have engineer stamps. They're stamped here, but admittedly, they don't have. Somebody who's got the background in concrete and the chemistry involved there. To read through that with the expertise that we're looking for. So they've recommended that we. Um, you know, both their recommendation and hire. And I asked them for two or three individuals, something like that, two or three. This is who they kind of narrowed it down to. They've had some preliminary discussions. Sounds like they're available and willing to look at the project. And so they've done a little pre-work for us on this. And you know, again, I've got great confidence in West Tech and their ability to kind of vet folks out a little bit.
Uh, so does that mean it doesn't have to go out for a bid process? Like what would the?
I I think the way that we can arrange that, because again, I I think. There's a very good chance to think of it as litigation. Is uh. And there's some advantage to having whatever that report is as attorney work product. Uh, so it's likely that what will happen is that I'll contract with that person. And really what we're kind of hearing is ask for payment. That that's a expense that your lawyer would have.
And again, fingers crossed, we can get, I mean, again. And with rose colored glasses, our consultants can agree with their consultant and give us some assurance. At this point, I'm not comfortable with that, but but we'll see. I may be educated and may learn more and. And we may be okay with the current slab. Today, my concern is I'm I'm not okay with that at all. I'm not okay that West Tech's not okay with it.
It did not meet the contractual specifications.
So, yeah, it's to me, it's as much about. The quality of the pores is about you had a contractual obligation to meet this and you didn't meet this. Um, do we hold your feet to that? Or what they're doing is jumping over that and just saying, well, yeah, to look at the end product is fine. Yeah, but you missed this here, but the end product's fine, but you missed this. So. Um, I think if we, if the city held our ground and said, no, we just missed this, we'll end up in litigation, period, because they're going to go. They'll go before a judge and they'll say, well, the contract said this, but look at all the experts. So we say that say this is fine. So again, I think it's more prudent to this point for the city to. Not ignore the fact that they didn't meet the contractual obligation and recognize that. But I think it's in our best interest to also have some look at the slab itself. Look at the integrity itself. And if we can find falls or defects in the slab, that's going to. Strengthen our our case, right? At this point, we don't have anything other. Their experts are saying, which is that it's fine.
Is there any chance that that cost could be. Cooperated from. The contractors or is that just sort of like our general one that's just shot? Would it probably come out of project contingencies? Okay, right. But we probably wouldn't be able to get that. We're, we're paying for it for our. For our benefit.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing is impossible. Sure. Let me put it that way.
In terms of if we do enough of the litigation and, you know, with insurance companies and someone's going to have to remove it. That cost probably could be wrapped in.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And what you have then dueling experts. So there's.
Sure.
And then. I guess as far as timeline, like how like, there's something to build the water treatment. So this will cause some delay. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah.
How long that is, we don't know because we don't know what the.
Right.
What the, what the end result is. And it could be, as Chris was saying, best case. Experts absolutely agree. There's nothing wrong with this thing. You guys can have confidence in moving forward. Perfect. Our professional liability insurance is online for all this. Excellent. Um, worst case is our expert says, oh, no. There is, there is nothing that's been done correctly here. And uh. We want it removed. I think. Uh, even with that. Our, the contractor does have a plan to remove it. It's the, it's the cost.
Yeah.
That's the driver at this point, not. They, they, if if we told them today. Go out and remove that thing, they're not going to accept it under any circumstances. I believe they would remove it. There's still going to be some delay because uh. Uh, you can't reuse the rebar. You can't. So there's materials that'll have to be obtained and my suspicion is. Uh, that supplier won't be the same supplier. There's just.
Any other questions?
Can I get a motion to proceed? I said consensus, but really it'd be good to get a motion to proceed for the. Uh, hiring of a consultant for, let's say, not to exceed $30,000.
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we allow Chris latitude to hire consultant. A professional consultant to evaluate the concrete slab entirety of it. At a maximum of more than $30,000.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I will report back. I won't wait till the end of August to hear back. So through email, I'll report back to the council on status updates. Um, just don't reply all, just reply to me directly with questions as we go. And I'll keep you updated as we go through the process, but um.
And just for Ruth Post, I don't think I said that I made that motion and Counselor Nielsen seconded it.
Any other questions on staff updates?
Any council reports?
I've got a quick one. Today I attended the American Red Cross Global Disaster Response Explaining and it was.
And it was, other than the email, I'm guessing everybody got it, but anyway, it was great. It was online and it was an hour. And they are looking for councillors and mayors to understand their process. 90% of the people that work in an emergency, a wildfire, a flood, a tornado, are volunteers. And so we need to get some volunteers trained and ready so that they understand either the feeding or the sheltering or the getting out the news. And that's what they say especially. They would like the city council to be ready to do is broadcast the news somehow that you have to get out or there's help over here and give them a place that there are help. I am interested in doing some training. So if there's anybody else that would like to do that with me, I will contact them. I will probably send out some information. They said they're going to do a follow-up email after this. And I haven't gotten it yet, but it's to give some more information on who we contacted and how we go about doing things. And I just thought it was great way for us to learn more about helping and, you know, wildfires. Oh, they, oh, wildfire potential in the West is above average this year. It's pretty bad in Oregon and it will be for several months. So that's basically, so far, there have been $10 billion disasters in America in 2023. So we're talking about some of the floods and the tornadoes and some wildfires. So those are huge issues above us itself. They're looking for some more volunteers. So it's great.
I guess I have a quick thing. I got an email from some folks at the Department of Human Services that I think Chelsea directed to me that were wanting to sort of work with the city to help get the word out about trying to find more folks who are willing to be resource parents, which is the new term for foster parents. There's a critical shortage of that. So I'm going to try to meet with those folks, I think, next week. And come back with sort of what they're thinking the city could help with that. But if anyone else is interested in that, let me know. So I can, I'll follow up with that in a moment.
Thank you.
Say if he can get newsletter for these ties, whatever, just forward that on to Chelsea and I. Ruth, you can.
Kazakazi?
Yes, I listened to a Red Cross program and they have been in the, the same program that, that was also described, but it seemed to me like it would be, it was, this was specifically for elected officials and city managers. And I think I was the only elected official on it. But it might be very beneficial for the council to have as a guest speaker our regional Red Cross coordinator, which is a woman out of Eugene. So then she could better prep us for how to respond in a disaster.
Thank you. Great idea. Any additional comments, questions? Ruth?
MICA Oregon Cities Conference in October. Registration opens this Thursday. That's later this week. Counselor Andrade has expressed that she would like to attend. And so I've given her the agenda to provide for me so that, provide back to me what she wants to attend so that I can get her correctly registered. If anyone else intends to attend, please let me know. I'll get you registered on Thursday morning.
And hotels real quick, right?
Well, it's in Eugene. So. It's October 12th, Thursday, October 12th through 14th. Saturday morning is the last session and it wraps up at noon. Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But, you know, there are the counselor workshops option. And I never know when I, until I get into registration, if they're going to ask me to indicate what breakout sessions you think you want to go to. So it's helpful for me to have that heads up in hand and any dietary restrictions. So if there's anybody else who wants a copy of this tonight, I made three extras. And it would be good to have that back to me before Thursday morning so that I can get you registered. And yes, you cannot get a hotel reservation until you have registered. It takes a specific code in order to do that. But again, it is in Eugene. So it is within an hour drive.
If anyone has any questions about it, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, Flum Community Services is having their annual anniversary celebration on Sunday, September 17th, from 11:00 to 3:00 at Mary's River Park. Thank you so much. There's that wonderful flyer. So they've invited all of us, mayor, city council. They would love for us to attend. And so I mentioned that would be something I'd put out as an email. September 17th, it's a Sunday, 11:00 to 3:00, Mary's River Park.
We also have a sip and stroll happening on the 22nd. Okay, seeing no additional comments with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all being here.